Sorry, it's July 18th, planning board.
Good evening. Brandon Dushar, Dushar M. Dilis, and first of all, just thanks to the way I've kind of working this meeting day in around this project. I'm here tonight on behalf of Wayne Malane Wessel, 42 Harvard Road, and their property had been on the market for quite some time, and really the desire was to sell the whole piece, but unfortunately, you know, they were unable to find the buyers that could basically do the whole thing, given the amount of land that was there. So, at that point, they decided that they would cut out a lot for the existing house, and then potentially have the additional house lots in the back there. And one of the things that's driving this, and as soon as they did that, they actually really got an offer on the house, and that's kind of what's driving this, the timing on this A&R plan. They've got a closing in August, which is why we were trying to get on with you here in July. And the second thing that's come up since we filed, because what we did is we filed an A&R plan with backland special permit lots on it, and given the fact that it's a special permit lot, there's a 20-day appeal period, and we heard from the buyer that they're unable to obtain financing until this lot is formally created and there's a recorded plan. So, what we'd like to do, if we can, would be to continue the hearing for the special permit until August, because there's no driving rush on the two backland lots, but I'd like to do an A&R plan that essentially just cuts off this lot right now for the existing house. This lot, basically would show the remaining land as parcel A. This lot, which we're, it's going to be Lot 2 on both plans, it's the exact same lot, same bearings and everything, but I guess our desire here would be to continue that to your next meeting, and ideally endorse this A&R plan.
So, the next meeting is the special permit, but this is just the A&R?
Correct. Instead of complicating, try to do both tight, I think it's cleaner, but there's not a rush, we can continue that one and go back-to-back. And then the other thing to look at is, obviously, they're going to put this on record, and we just want to make sure when this goes through next month, and then the appeal period, that when that goes on record, there's no conflicts between the lots. So, when they refer to Lot 2, we want to make sure that Lot 2 is the same on both plans, which it is.
So, on the back, so you would have two backland lots?
Yeah, so, we could either talk about that later, or I can show you kind of what we're planning, just so that we know what we're signing up for. Yeah, so basically, it's as submitted to you, which is what we're prepared to come in and have it on tight, which is basically, this is the traditional lot, they close to the existing house. The way the property is now, at one point, a lot of this was farmed and was, you know, hobby farmed really by Wayne Malane. There's the front piece of the property, which, you know, has a lot of their gardens, and it's cleared all the way back to this wetland, this little pond in the back, and the desire was to kind of set this up with Wayne to kind of have as much of that existing yard covered with the house. And then what we do is we grab the two backland lots, reduce front slots, and on either side, that basically will come back in excess, both lots are in excess of four and a half acres, they meet the minimum width requirements, and really, also that access and use even just because there's some gardens here, and we just want to make sure that, obviously, everything kind of in the front stays as is as you drive by Harvard Road, you know, it's going to look essentially the same, but there'll be a driveway, a sheer driveway, it kind of comes through, there'll be a crossing here, and goes out and accesses both those lots there.
Okay. So, you put this on here, just 50 there and 50 there?
Yeah, so, in order, because there's a driveway and, you know, a well here, so in order to do that, you could only get two side-by-side and meet everything, so we just put it.
And what's going to be decided, conventional? Put over here and over there, just conventional lots?
Uh, yes, I mean, as you look at this one, I think it's actually predates, but yeah, it would have been conventional. So, there are no backland lots, even if there were, you'd need two, because it's basically, you do two, and then you have to separate traditional.
Yep. That's fine with me. Do I have to open and continue this?
No, let's just move to, let's move the hearing to the next meeting day, and open it then. We're starting to open it.
We can open that, or?
We do, yeah.
You want to, do you want to put on the A&R first, and then put on that?
Um, it doesn't matter. Yeah, that probably makes more sense to do the A&R first, and then.
And then we approve the A&R plan for Lot 2 Harvard Road, as shown on the plans of July 18th, 2018.
A second.
On our favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right.
Well, just move to, well, we didn't open it, so we're not continuing it, we're just moving the date.
When is that, so?
I think we're saying middle of August, right? August 15th?
14th, I think.
15th, August 15th.
The second Wednesday is the 8th, but the 15th is probably on May 2. If you want to just do that?
Just do one and all, that's it?
Yeah.
August 15th.
Unless there's a lot of business coming up with it.
We have a common driveway that we submitted, that I need to aggratize for.
Okay.
Does the 15th work for you, for that?
That works for that, yeah, I was going to get it in the paper press.
Okay.
Do we have four people that can make it to 15?
I can make it.
Yeah.
Sorry, Stan.
All right, yeah.
Yeah.
So, move it to the end, and? And will it be at 6:00 though, or 7:30? I was just going to say, let's have it at a regular time. Oh, okay, I just wasn't sure if.
Okay, and move that we change the date of the hearing for Wayne Wessel, 42 Harvard Road, for parcel A, to 7:30 on August 15th.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
I'm deep in bottom.
I know.
Do you want to sign this, or?
You do, I'll come and grab the papers.
That's the time of the date you were, you were, another date waiting for you to say that you shot me.
I have any to leave?
Yeah, I think she needs three papers.
So, we just, so, the A&R, is that one of these that we just did?
I don't think he was on.
No, it wasn't on, okay, okay, this was just, I got you, okay.
Yeah, what we would have been doing is creating the A&R and increasing two backland lots.
Um, two is really a lead, we have one for me and one for accessory.
Two.
So.
Got it. James was inside, that's a good five, yeah. Next up's 369 Old Bay Road.
Hi.
Hey.
This is Tim Murphy's property at 369 Old Bay Road. You have to recuse yourself personally.
Uh, where is it?
369 Old Bay.
This is the one on?
Oh, no.
So, this is the one you had to recuse yourself on, this one?
Yeah, I'm thinking about it, butter, because I'm on Wilder Road, 195.
You were accusing yourself previously.
You were then 400 feet.
Oh, did I get a notice or anything? Was I supposed to get a notice or something?
No, it's not a hearing.
Oh, oh, okay. So, where is it?
It's on Old Bay Road.
This is an A&R, it's a public hearing.
Yeah.
Well, it's still, yeah.
Is there something?
So, this is the driveway for this one was approved over here on Wilder, with the mailbox right in there.
Okay.
And the common driveway is like over.
Right there.
Yeah.
So, am I considered in a butter?
I was saying you were accusing yourself previously.
Oh, did, I didn't get a notice or anything, was I supposed to get a notice or something?
No, it's not a hearing.
Oh, oh, okay. So, where is it?
It's on Old Bay Road.
This is an A&R, it's a public hearing.
Yeah.
Well, it's still, yeah.
Is there something?
So, this is the driveway for this one was approved over here on Wilder, with the mailbox right in there.
Okay.
And the common driveway is like over.
Right there.
Yeah.
So, am I considered in a butter?
I was just saying you were accusing yourself previously.
Well, this one's right across from.
Yeah, this is now under separate ownership, so.
Yeah, that one I can see.
Okay, all right, we're talking about something over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not on.
Okay, okay, it's good.
So, here's Wilder, take a left on Old Bay, it's the first farmhouse after, well, I don't know if John Mecklen still lives there, but he used to very recently. This is a little like farmhouse, it runs from the field, the hayfield, and it's right above the street, there's the barn there. This is Tim Murphy's house, this is his remaining land, just wants to divide it into one bar lot plus his existing house, with the remaining acreage of 2.48. And Lot 1C, which is a conforming lot for frontage, lot width and shape. Both are entirely upland area residential zone, which is actually existing.
I was just asking, is that existing?
Yeah, and we're going to utilize that, it's there to make some improvements to it, but we haven't filed for scenic road, because there's already a driveway there, and there'll be no, no destructions, no wall, no removal of trees, and we're using the existing driveway, it'll just be.
Yeah, because previously, when we talked about this lot, that's what's the whole scenic hearing, we were asking to use this, but you didn't want to have a house on this road, have the street now.
Right, right.
But anyway, yeah, and this is kind of bold too, because you knew he was going to be doing this, so.
Is there a driveway to Lot 1D?
There is, it's here.
Okay, so there's this, so there's no new, there's no new curb cuts that are needed?
No, nothing's changing on this house, we have Title 5 down, the septic system passed, so he's not, he's not doing a new septic and driveway, he's not doing anything there. There's a septic here for this house, and the posthouse is back here, the lot designation is. And the tree lot comes up, this is all kind of open down here, it kind of comes back around it.
Yeah.
They're going to do a little bit of tree clearing, but Tim is very particular about getting approval of the house site location, so maybe a little bit of tree clearing and a 50% drive of the perimeter of the lot, he wants to really be able to buffer around. So, I mean, not that that's on the plan, but that's the intent of the house, keep housing well here, the existing driveway and septic, and this is all, you know, we call it field, but it's sort of like farm lawn, you know, in the front, and that'll remain as it is, and you'll build a septic, you know, grade that in, but the, you know, the curving, the look from the street won't change significantly. We'll be able to see the house, but it's going to be a couple hundred feet back from the street, so. But, again, this is a pretty lot required, you've got the frontage and the area and the shape, and the, you can get the lot listed, so. Just wanted to run down the checklist in my head.
I mean, I think he misled us, and, I mean, he liked us on the other lot, and so.
But that's a strong word.
Well, no, and he argued so strongly that this was a dangerous place for driveway, you know, I think the driveway should be over here, near the curve, so it's better, got better visibility, and I think there's like a rise right in here, so, I think.
There is a rise here.
Yeah, there's a rise here that blocks.
I mean, I looked at the site distance there, it's pretty good, I mean, it's over 150 feet, it's not ideal.
You didn't hear how terrible it was when he was in here arguing.
Well, there was a block there.
Yeah, which is why we should move it away from the curve.
I mean, my thing, you know, previously was having, you know, a road on Wilder, you know, house on Wilder, to dress the Old Bay Road, so.
I think it's from marketing perspective.
I mean, I think, I mean, he'd be so adamant that it was so dangerous over here, that, you know, I think, I think we need to, you know, hold him to that.
Well, maybe it's less dangerous for one house serve than two.
For the number, for the number of trips in and out on two houses versus one, I don't think that's a very valid argument.
Yeah, but was it, is it the stone wall yet?
No.
So, they could move the driveway?
Well.
I don't think he wants the next one.
While there's an existing gravel that could be, you know, this easily.
There's remains of a wall, there's a wall that comes down, and it kind of, there's some rocks piled up on the side here, and then sort of immediately kind of peers out, and this is all just kind of an open drainage ditch across the front, there isn't really anything except utility holes in the street.
And your principal tip, to find it like this, you know, I think, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, not doing our job, like, you know, letting them.
I know.
You know, I mean, if it was dangerous before, it's still dangerous, and we should hold them to that.
Well, we don't, this is just the A&R, so we don't have any control of it, right?
I don't know, do we have to vote to approve it?
We do.
To approve the approval of our wire, yeah.
We just make sure it falls.
Conforms to zoning and to the subdivision rules for the A&R plan.
Well, yeah, but I think we also get to chime in on driveway location and that sort of thing.
For this?
For any lot, for any lot.
Well, Erica deals with it, it doesn't come to, single driveways don't always come to us.
Okay.
Unless it's like a scenic road hearing, which this wouldn't be, yeah, so, I don't know, I know what you're saying.
I mean, I think, I think we're, I'm voting no, just on principle.
Well, all we're asking you to vote on is that the lots conform to zoning, the zoning by law, and not to be, to approve the driveway.
That's why I was getting on stuff.
That's fine, then, you know, we just need to approve the approval of our wire.
Yeah, well, I think we just need to, unfortunately, it's one of those.
I mean, but we're also voting on what's being presented, which is the driveway here, and, you know, and I think.
Well, you're not approving a driveway location, that's an existing site feature that was just happened to be surveyed, and it's not, this is gravel.
Yeah, it's a spot line.
Yeah, I think this is just approving what's in front of us, because I'm wholeheartedly with you on that, but I don't think.
So, what, so we need to tell Erica that when this driveway comes up, do you want it?
Yes, I think that's exactly, but I think this in front of us, we're just voting based on the zoning, but we're limited to A&R, and that makes sense.
Because the single house driveways, Erica or Mike, Sal, Joe, goes, what's that, improves, it doesn't come before us, but unless they see some issue with it, then I would, or else we flag it.
So, we can let her know of our concerns with the driveway for this, but the A&R plan, I think, solely just what's in front of us, and we have to take it.
Split them before?
No, two.
Well, that's, he's done piece by piece over the last few years, yeah.
Because originally.
He carved off this piece, you know, probably three or four years ago, then he carved this off a couple years.
Last year.
This was one original lot at that time, right, which is asking for splitting it totally.
Yeah, and by doing it this way, there's nothing going on, and not too much whatsoever, which is.
Well, there's a house built here, there's a new house built here.
But by doing it this way, it's prevented the board from handling any of the managing curb cuts or anything like that.
Because there are two brand-new curb cuts put in along the road, that all have shared driveway.
Whereas he knew that both of these were going to be there, and he could have done a common, a shared driveway.
If he did it all.
If we had done it at once, but by doing it piecemeal like this, he hamstrung the board, so I think, you know, payback's a bitch.
Well, I think we want to, you know, typically, you know, we're a planning board, and we're trying to.
We're trying to plan.
Plan for the future.
And managing curb cuts.
Does anybody have for this?
Okay.
Have a motion?
Motion to approve the A&R for 369 Old Bay Road.
A second.
On favor?
Aye, I'll approve the A&R of that driveway, so.
Okay. All right, well, it's unanimous. I just want to sign this guy, that's what we got.
She's a head of simple A&R.
I know.
You do, but you don't have simple history with the applicant here.
Well, we're not here to approve the driveway location, the driveway permit, none of that, so.
And that's correct, you're right.
Like you said. We can have Erica and Mike look at it.
I think that would be good.
Yeah. That's something that Mike does look at. Yeah, and I know, I mean, I know, he was adamant, he didn't want the driveway over close to his house, so, but, you know, but you don't, if it's a safer location, then.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Missed everything out being left in. If you only know. You need to search seats for Mike.
How many members on the board?
Five and an associate.
This is five and an associate. Did you say how many you would have at the August 15th meeting? Is everyone going to be here?
We have to have at least four, if it's a hearing.
It's a special permit, yes, but, well, that, not for, I'm here for another matter. Brandon, sorry. Yeah, I'll make sure you have four on.
Three is typically a four.
Four for a special permit.
And it's only for that item. We have one here, you take one.
We take the two paper.
I take the model R.
Yeah.
Can, or date, on the date line?
Oh, I'll put it actually top.
I don't have the registry to bring it back, as we do. Sometimes they actually look at them, you know.
Why? All right, thanks. It's just, it's just this paper. All right, next up, 147 Long Hill Road, Walter Erickson was originally going to be here, but he's had some issue where he can't be here now. Don't think, are you here for this?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, Fred's not here, Walter's not here, so we don't have tons to talk about what's going on.
You don't have to wait until 7:00?
Well, I just, I mean, it's on the agenda, so.
You're one of the residents there?
Yep, I'm on 147 Long Hill.
And a butter's under, excuse myself on this one.
So, I guess what Erica was saying is, the special permit for common driveway was up last summer. I mean, technically, we could, you know, go after him for that, but we kind of want, just want him to finish it. So, Erica's looking into, you know, the residents want it done, they have a bunch of complaints, which we've seen.
Yeah, we saw the photos.
We saw the photos, and we saw.
Oh, yeah, that, okay, that was that one I was, okay, yeah, 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 sorry.
How much do we hold in bond right now?
20, 20 is 16?
From here. The reason why Fred's not here is because there's no more money in the fund for Fred, so that's another thing Erica said, that, you know, we request that to be, oh, yeah, three up.
Can we discuss this, if Walter Erickson isn't here?
Yeah, we can discuss it. I mean, like I said, there's not tons to discuss without him here, but it's on the agenda, so.
Well, his, so his letter was from, he said they walked it two weeks ago, maybe he's reviewed the items.
Fred?
Yeah, Fred with Walter.
Okay.
Right, and so, he's saying, yep, we're clear on what needs to be done, but I think what you're saying is since, two weeks ago.
Well, he, he walked it to July 10th, because Fred's.
And that's when, okay, you're saying since July 10th, more damage has happened?
Yeah, I think our main concern is this shared driveway, this moving of equipment in and out.
Yeah, and that's what we saw, and these pictures and stuff.
Yeah, and also, they're going to be doing work to remove like this dumpster, an old epoxy dump off the side, which requires moving like an excavator off the side, that would cause more damage to that.
Oh, these photos are from.
These are from June, June 29th.
And there's also some from July 9th, so presumably Fred saw these already. There's a couple on the 12th.
So, do we know, so supposedly Fred met with Walter, Walter's aware of everything and is going to be taken care of it all?
Well, that's what, that's what, this, what Walter says, but it sounds like some of this damage, I don't know if this was all done at the same time, like, one of these photos is from the 12th, I don't know if that means that the damage happened on the 12th?
No, it's just happened the other day we walked it.
Okay, but that, like this one, did this happen a week before? Has it been like that for a while?
Yeah, it's probably been like that for a couple weeks.
Okay, so, I mean, so Fred was, Fred saw it, so.
I mean, the top priority for the residents, I assume, is that it gets done right, and you're going to have a road that's not going to crumble.
Exactly.
So, you know, we want him to get it done, but we also want it done right.
If there is a deadline set, if he doesn't meet that deadline, like what would happen?
Yeah, so Erica said she was looking into, you know, potential fines, maybe, or things like that, just to try to spur him along, yeah, but, you know, I don't think we're in really the position with nobody here.
Right, it's a general question.
I mean, we hear your concerns, Erica hear your concerns, and I think, you know, we're going to try to address it as best we can.
Yeah, she just wants it to get done too, yeah.
Do they have a timeframe that they're held to, or?
Well, I mean, it's a two-year permit, so we're past that.
Yeah, so now whether we, we don't know whether repercussions are because it does that?
Yeah, I mean, she was going to talk to town council about it.
Okay.
But.
So, there's not much else to talk about?
There's not really much to talk about, unfortunately.
Okay.
I mean, you could say your piece, or whatever you want to say, we have your information.
If there's anything else you want to add tonight, you can say.
Clearly, the pictures and the things you've said, they look like things that need to be addressed before we would really send you bond.
Okay, the only other thing might be, just on first report, you had mentioned about the plantings from last year, there's probably about half a dozen that are probably not living anymore. I think at the December 13th meeting, we talked about there might be warranty on the plants.
Oh, you see, well, there's a year warranty for them, but I thought what you said is you don't want to have to have, the residents have to put them in and stuff, you want the contractor basically to, or Walter's basically install them.
Actively working.
Yeah, I think that's a usable request.
Yeah, for sure.
While they're actively there, they should replace them.
Yeah, so the next time Walter's here, we can request him to do that.
Okay.
I don't have anything else on this, I'm sorry, but nobody's here.
Thank you.
Brandon, come back, or do we just?
7:15, well, we got 12 more minutes.
And what's the key's file, is it him as well, or are we just, we're just signing stuff?
So, yeah, we just have to sign stuff, did Erica leave it on here? Or they, or they come out it?
I don't see stuff.
So, I talked to Erica about Tadmore, they are. So, they want, I haven't moved on from my first, I don't have the exact wording, we need to, our condition we put in our decision.
For Tadmore?
Yeah, because we said that you can't.
Oh, if it's Tadmore, I need to recuse myself. That one I know I need to recuse myself.
Force is full of conflict.
You know, we're accusing ourselves so there's not a conflict, right?
Yeah, so it's, it was conditions extend and lobby, she has them highlighted in her, in her packet here. Okay, she gave me the exact wording of what she said. Okay. So she said, we should vote for a minor modification to the Tadmore subdivision to modify condition number 11 of the subdivision approval to allow the applicant to construct the meandering path through open space one prior to the issuance of the X building permit. So before they get any building permits, they were supposed to construct the meandering pathway?
Yeah.
But what they told her is they'd like to build one or two houses beforehand. I'd be fine with that, I thought.
And, and the same of the, with the trail in open space two, this is what she has highlighted here. Condition 10.
Prior to the issue.
Why didn't we? Why didn't you say before? I would assume that the trail would have been one of the last things they did.
I think we probably said before to make sure that it actually got done in a timely fashion.
Well, what she said is.
That we weren't here four years from now arguing about it.
She said move it to like the X building permit, so I don't know if you wanted to say like three or something like that, just to push it along. Prove this condition.
Yeah, I was gonna say four, but yeah, three, four, whatever.
Whatever, yeah. You guys are completely.
Do four.
So prior, so prior to issuing the fourth building permit?
Yeah. So you wanna, so you wanna modify, you wanna modify 10 and 11 then?
Yeah. Unless there are any butters here objecting to that.
What she said.
Okay, so I move that we make a minor modification to the Tadmore subdivision order of conditions to modify condition number 10 and 11 of the subdivision approval to allow the applicant to construct the trail and meandering path prior to the issuance of, or, or.
Four?
Oh, it's prior to the issue, or, yeah, prior to the issuance of the fourth building permit. Second.
On a favor?
Alright.
Alright?
Is that all we're doing on?
That was it, yeah.
And then, what about key's farm?
I just saw Brandon, that he was just on the. Just seeming to be, keys.
I think, I think so.
You must have the plans that we're signing.
It's pretty much a signing party, I mean, we don't want anything to vote with.
You wanna go over?
Is he out there?
I just saw him, but two seconds ago. He might have walked that way. Oh, because we're early, can we?
We're, yeah, we're.
Yeah, we have people that are interested, if you're talking about the key farm development, that wanna participate in the discussion.
Okay. Well, I can move on.
Can we do it five minutes early, do we need to wait?
I don't think it's a hearing.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Twenty minutes early, but yeah.
What are we discussing?
Oh, you're right.
Well, so you're.
We have several people that wanna make, wanna raise some points relative to that.
Yeah, some people wanted to talk about the existing structure and stuff.
Well, what's the?
So, so this, so I guess I'll give the administration. So myself and Mike were there post-letting, so the first thing we discussed was Century Mills states, and there was a little bit of a discussion, but ultimately they voted unanimously to, as long as all the conditions were met and everybody's happy to allow the, to allow the special acceptance. They didn't write a letter or anything, but it's public record, that should be good enough. And then there's anything else from me and the Fred. Okay, so we just, we just did the Tadmore thing, Brandon.
We did?
Yeah.
Okay.
We approved it. We just had to sign something?
Okay.
Did you need us to say anything?
No.
So we, we just had a vote for a minor modification to Tadmore subdivision, modify conditions 10 and 11 of the subdivision approval. So all you have to construct the meandering path through open space one instead of two. One and two, prior to the issuance of the fourth building permit, is what we said.
Okay. I believe so, yeah, Jordan was coming, but yeah.
Sorry, I mean, we can help with that.
Yeah, when he gets here, I'll double check, but yeah.
That's what we said, so you can build three.
I think, yeah, we kinda said we'd throw out six, but four's probably the same, because I don't think they're gonna get that many. I think what they're doing, they're hoping to wait till all the leaves came down in the fall and kinda go and start working on those.
Yeah.
And I don't really see, honestly, they're making good headway there, but I don't see, you know, needing when the four, so, but yeah.
Yeah, we were ahead of schedule, so if he has something to say or add, then.
Okay, alright, great, no, thank you, yeah. George, sorry.
We were a little ahead of schedule.
Oh. They net? Four. How does four building permits sound? Yep, thank you very much.
So, that's what conditions 10 and 11, so that's the trail and meandering path.
It's actually three.
Yeah, yeah, it's three, prior to the fourth.
Prior to four.
Prior to the fourth.
Yeah.
Yep, that's great.
Alright.
That was easy.
Yep.
Nice, nice sniper drive.
Sorry.
Thank you.
It's unusual, we're ahead of schedule, but just to delay a little bit, I guess. So, yeah, so that was the Century Mill, right? It was a lot of talk, but.
Yeah, I mean, we're just concerned about making sure that everything, you know, well.
Was Andy there, does he anticipate?
Fred, right, Fred, sorry.
Do they, now that they've gotten the plan, you know, the board's lights went on board or something, do they anticipate going forward and trying to see if they can get this done?
That's what Fred said, but he did put in there, he's like, oh, we've been waiting here, you guys, so.
Well, that's what I was waiting, I knew that would be.
He did say that, so.
It seems like their usual sign again, so.
So it's what? So they have like two or three months to get it ready for.
Yeah.
Topco, pretty much. So the next thing we talked about was the Affordable Housing Production Plan. The reason why I wanted to bring it up at that meeting is because they were adding two new members to the Affordable Housing Trust. So they're a full board, but, you know, typically not much really goes on on that board these days, I mean, they they do an affordable house every now and then, but to, to do this plan is a lot of work, so I just wanted to bring it up that, you know, we think that. Well, Doug Story thought that that was the committee that should do it. But Kevin O'Brien is the chairman, he didn't, I mean, it's not official, but he pretty much said that they don't wanna be responsible for it. So, we'll let them talk about it again, but I think what's gonna end up happening is we're probably gonna have to create an ad hoc Housing Production Plan Committee. You know, kinda like a committee formed for the overlay. You know, one, two, or a few of us, I don't know, we probably can't have a forum on it, but a couple of us could be on it. This Housing Production Plan Committee.
Yeah, it'd probably help with that as guidance from.
Right. Well, well, and that's the other thing Kevin was saying is that, you know, he thinks that should be more the planning board because, you know, we're gonna need to be creating bylaws to go right along with this production plan, you know, so. I mean, ultimately, he didn't seem comfortable, like, he wasn't like, oh, yeah, we'll do that.
Yeah.
So that's probably what we're doing, so, you know, myself or, Dawn did say in the meeting that Erica can't be involved at all in the housing production plan because she's so busy. So I think what we're gonna have to do is, I'll take a crack at it, but create like a charter for what this committee would do and set like the number of people and kind of like the array of different types of people we would want, and then then we would go back before the selectmen for them to create the committee.
How many people now are on the Affordable Housing?
Three.
That's it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's three, but also the selectmen, technically, technically number is.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big, that's a convention.
Yeah, so, you know, and we, when we looked at the old plan, there are, I think, eleven names on it.
Yeah, I mean, if you get a good committee, a lot of people, you can move forward, it's hard to just, I can understand this presidency, so.
Yeah, because you have to, you have to document what you have, you have to look at all the current projects, you have to talk about potential bylaws and and you have, you know, how each, set it up a year, how you're gonna get there, and I gotta talk about the demographics of the town, and it is a pretty complex document, so I think that's probably what we'll end up doing, you know, we'll talk about it when Erica's here more. And then the final thing we talked about was the master plan, it was pretty much the same conversation that, you know, a charter needs to be created. And I think there was even mention, talking about creating an ad hoc committee that would create the charter for the master plan.
And they are.
Committee for a committee, because, I mean, that is kind of like a.
I mean, it's, it's a pretty big charter to begin with.
It's a pretty big charter.
And a, and a big group, and it's gonna be a lot of sub, subcommittees on it.
I mean, you may even wanna do like a survey of town, what's important to town before you create the charter, you know, I don't know.
There's also, there's, there's grants out there too, that we can go forth to try to get. I, I recently was part of this municipal vulnerable program, this MVP program, that's out there for municipalities to get funding for began. Little different, but in that same context, you can apply for grants to help for other things, and actually Harvard got one recently through that program to also look at the town for, this is a little bit more hazard mitigation, but it kinda goes with the master plan of your, your town to how to address farms and, you know, farmland to prevent, to be more resilient and to prevent, you know, from catastrophe and stuff like that, so. So it's a little off key, but there are some things out there, I guess is what I was gonna say.
So, you know, so you would create this committee and then whether that's like the overall, you know, top committee, but then there would be subcommittees within that.
Yeah. To kinda do certain things, yeah.
Yeah.
And kinda go around.
Taxes, wind, wiring, I mean, parks and rec, there'd probably be, you know, maybe if you had 15 people in this committee and then there was like, you know, five, three person.
Who's a three, yeah.
Yeah, something like that, so, you know, just creating the charter alone is gonna be working, maybe we need some type of.
It just might, might be something that we wanna kinda consider as we're looking, you know, I mean, you look at a master plan, you're looking at what you're doing, but I think we should also keep in the back of our mind, you know, resiliency and are we planning something that is, is going to be there for the long haul and not, you know, just.
But what I took out of it is that the initial push seems like it's gonna be us, whether that's, whether that's driving for a committee just to create the charter, which maybe that's what we need, I don't know. Because we're gonna be very busy this year with, you know, subdivisions and our own bylaws, so I don't know how much time we have for all that, but, so I think it was pretty, pretty good. Anything else, anything on this?
Yeah, I mean, back on, on Century Mill, the big thing that people seem to be harping on is, is there a master list of everything that needs to be done?
Oh, yeah.
So we can have a checklist to say that they, yeah, master, not even a punch list, but just a, you know, everything that has to be done to get to the road except.
Right, people get confused because we have Fred's inspection, which has inspected what's been done, we have.
I mean, bottom line, what needs to be done is the plants, I mean, it's whatever's on the plant, that's, that's the.
Well, so that's what I'm saying, so you have the plant, which is what needs to be done, you have Fred Hanley's inspection, which is.
Of what has been done.
What has been done, and then you have Joe, then you have Joe Lynch's email or list of what, what he wants done, he wants done.
To support excepted, you know.
Okay, gotcha.
So the residents were just, residents were just concerned that.
Something would fall through the.
Like, there'd be miscommunication and get to, you know, get to the point, and we'd be like, oh, you forgot this, so. They wanted like, you know, us to meet monthly with that, which we kinda do anyway.
Yeah.
But. I think that's about it.
Yeah.
So it's so much money, are you guys okay with us going forward with key farm? Otherwise.
Do you anticipate any other people that may?
No, I'm aware of any.
Okay.
Okay, so this is pretty much just a signing party, but I think there's some things that need to be.
Yeah, so the, the big thing is, is since the decision was issued, we've gone through and we updated the plans set to incorporate all those conditions. That went to Fred Hanley, Fred reviewed it, cut back, and really, the only thing through going back forth with Fred was there was a condition that we show easements for the proposed trail, if you remember back ways. We talked about connecting, conservation wanted to connect open space from this subdivision to Danforth. And we looked at maybe going through lots, one and two, I think.
Yeah, we weren't sure.
And we kinda left it open where we said, you know, we'd go leave with conservation and then this final step would incorporate those easements. We did that, we went to the conservation, we kinda, we did a site walk, we went to kinda where those trails would be in relation. Some of them, you know, because it's one acre lots and we've got Wells and Semtex, you know, that trail location was gonna be, well, within 25 feet of a, a flooding house, and then we looked at another alternative, which would have been within like 20 feet of another house, so. Ultimately, what we agreed to with them was to just have the trails within the open space. And then, to try to connect it through Danforth, there's a different, a smaller section of open space right along the front edge of Hudson Road and Danforth, and we can kinda cut through to get to Danforth there, and then you'd have to walk down the road, but ultimately, that was decided as kind of the best option. So because the trails, and they are shown on, on this set of plans, because they're all within the open space, which will be deep over the town, there's no reason.
And, and Concombe was okay with that, so they.
Yeah, yeah, we had a couple meetings, and that's, that's basically, we came up with as the best solution, yeah.
So you'd come out, the trail would come through the road and go along the open space along the road and cut back up.
Yeah, you have to walk, if you wanted to walk to Danforth, you basically have to go through the road.
Along the road. I, I mean, I would, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, to, to have a trail, but then that close to someone's house, I think is not within kind of what, what about.
So also, since we last met on Pace, Dave Russell, in the process of purchasing the project and kind of taking over where Walker left off, so he's here tonight, and I think you wanted to discuss a few things with the board regarding the conditions?
Yeah, one of the things that I, I.
Well, so you, so you purchased all 18?
We purchased all, all 18, right, they're under agreement.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the closing, they close as soon as this gets signed. The, the question I had, and I think most of you know that I was one of the builders of, at Century Mills, and I've been in here before for my own lots and stuff, and I know the restrictions on the construction. I wanted to ask, we're getting, we're getting started a lot later than we thought we were going to start, if we could get some relief on Saturday work, I think that's a lot different than working at Century Mills, we have homeowners and things like that, we're talking specifically for roadwork, so we can get it in this year rather than, you know, go through the winter or whatever.
What, to get binder down?
Yep.
Well, typically what we have done in the past is we've had, you know, your request each Saturday that you wanna work, not just, we haven't left it open. Like just saying, oh, you can work Saturdays for months, you know, we just, we've asked like, you know, what Saturdays do you wanna work? Type of a situation.
You know, I, I, I don't need to ask for the whole enchilada, okay, but, okay, I, I, I would say every Saturday but one by Labor Day, okay, and again.
How, how late, are you going right up to November 15th, trying to meet Saturdays?
Yeah, we, yeah, we think we can get the road in, in, in four months, okay, so that's, that's our goal. Okay, and that's a realistic goal too, I mean, you run into things that pay me money, impact that, but that's our road builders estimate, okay, you know, he said three months, we talked about it, it's four months, so. And, 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 you know, it's not like he wants to work either, we just wanted to. And, and again, I mean, a little bit redundant, but, no, I think that's a lot different, I don't think there's many people around there, I mean, if, if somebody complains, we'll, we'll come back in here and talk, okay?
How close is Danforth?
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Right next door.
Yeah, it's true. Well, right next door could be, you know, how close are the houses to where the work would be done, and it's not right next door, I mean, there's. It's not right next door, I mean, there's some buffer there, so, but, you know, ballpark distance there, you know?
I mean, you're talking specifically about the road here, so, you know, the road's kinda goes from the middle of the property. So, five hundred feet, I would say, you know, there's, there's a house here, and then kinda out the back here.
I'm sure Erica was here.
What's been done in the past when a request has come in front of the plan?
So Century Mill Estates is...
Was there like a notice that went out to the butters for any Century Mill Estates?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying, that's what I said, I wish Erica was here, because I don't remember if it was a hearing or not. I do remember there being a big group of people here, but maybe, I don't know if that's just because it was on the agenda.
Clearly, this is not on the agenda.
Well, I was gonna say, clearly it's not on the agenda now, so we can't vote on it tonight.
No, it's not.
So, I mean, it at least needs to be on the agenda.
Yeah, 'cause I think it's just important to hear.
Of course.
Potential...
I mean, I remember there was probably twenty people here for...
Yeah, that all said, yeah.
That all said they didn't want it here. So, yeah, we can talk about that at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I just, we wanna hear...
When is the next meeting?
August fifteenth, is the, we're having just one meeting in August.
So, Mary, did you have something to add about that?
Uh, no, I was just going to confirm that people live in Danforth, and that I don't know if you have to notify butters, if you need a public hearing, you know, that sort of thing.
Yeah, so we're a month away from then, so we should have time if we need to do...
We'll touch with Erica and make sure.
Yeah, but it at least needs to be on the agenda, of course.
I forget how, it wasn't really, I was at the last meeting with them. It wasn't so much, it wasn't a public hearing notified, but I know some way the butters would be...
That's, I just remember them being notified somehow, I don't know if it was just a letter...
Sandwich board, or sort of whether they'd call or anything, it was...
Well, and I even remember for, I think, when this came up for the special permit, it was talked about if Saturdays were going to be brought up, it would be notified, you know, the others would have a chance to, you know, comment on it, so we just wanna make sure we somehow...
It was discussed in that public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
Just make, yes, quickly, does the plan, does this plan, yeah? Bob Bush, Coventry Wood Road, a member of the historical commission.
Yeah.
Does the, does the plan address the entire site, including the historic home?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, it does, but I don't wanna get to that historic one yet, I just wanna talk about, we will talk about it.
Okay.
Was there something else kind of on Saturdays or something? What did, John, can I do?
Hi, I'm David Bonazoli, I wanna talk about the home, so it's gonna be discussed...
Yeah, we'll get to that, for sure. I definitely want to set it aside, yeah. Was there any other conditions?
No, that's...
No, that's the one that you wanted.
That was basically it. And then we wanna talk about the house too, so.
Yeah, in general, the housing style, I know that you build kind of sort of a cookie, I mean, you build sort of a cookie cutter type house for this division, this subdivision, and, you know, what are you envisioning?
Uh, they're gonna be colonials, okay, that's what we built.
Yeah, I mean, but I know like in the past, when you've had a group of houses, they've all been very similar. Are you gonna have different plans?
There's gonna be different plans, okay, you know, okay, we do spec a lot of houses, there'll be a lot of garage unders here that we have been built in the past, with a colonial with a family room with a garage under, 'cause the topography lends itself to that. There's a lot of houses that are gonna be staggered, I think it's gonna be a lot different than, than you've seen in the past. Okay, we don't plan to build three thousand square foot houses, okay? Okay, we're planning to build twenty-four, twenty-five hundred square foot houses, which are, you know, by Bolton standard, affordable housing, okay?
Well, that's good, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's what we, that's what we plan to build, we're not going to be building to Andy's specification, for lack of a better...
Yeah, yeah, okay, just, I just know that this plan concerns before that it was kind of, you know, same thing, I still wanna see the same thing eighteen times in a row.
You're not gonna see the same thing eighteen times in a row.
Yeah.
Okay.
Seventeen.
No, no, it, we have to sell it, so, okay, so we're aiming this towards a sub-six-hundred-thousand-dollar market, which...
That's good.
Which again is affordable housing.
Do they have to go through that, some review board?
No.
We can decide if we really wanna, you know, change that in the future, but not at the moment.
So, I mean, I guess what everybody's here for, the other, the biggest thing is, uh, did you have...
No, no, sorry, bye, no.
The other, the biggest thing is the house. I know that when the former owners were here, we were requesting that, that historic home would be saved and turned into a duplex. There's a clause in the bylaws that if the house is sold, you can do a duplex as to preserve the house.
Right.
I know that the previous owners were saying that it was not recoverable, but I've heard that that's not the case, so I guess I'll, I know everybody's here to talk about that, so if you guys wanna...
Well, let me start off. To what extent was the house and its decision considered in the plan that's been approved?
So, it's still, so this, to go as far as, you know, talk, say, but the original house was left in the plan, right?
Yeah, so basically, the house was preserved and specifically because of the inclusionary housing bylaw, was targeted during that process and written the decision. Hopefully, that would be used in a duplex configuration to achieve that, because for every eight lots, we need one unit, and basically...
And that could be the two.
And that could be the two.
Exactly.
And the thing is, if you tore it completely down, then you couldn't have a duplex, because then you're not preserving what was there.
Well, a lot of it's discussed is, we kinda left it where we're gonna go through it, look at the economics versus renovating, and how much of the building may need to be reconstructed, with the caveat that if, let's say, more than none need to be reconstructed, we were gonna preserve the look.
That's what I remember him saying.
Is really what it comes down to.
The inside, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the previous owner had said at the latest hearing was, the numbers came back and it didn't seem that the inside really could be maintained, but the outside look and feel would all be maintained, at least that was...
Who reviewed those numbers?
We didn't, that's just what they said.
That was just what was said during the hearing.
Yeah. I think, you know, I talked to Erica earlier today, and we need to get Mike, somebody who's a building inspector, probably involved to verify, you know, I mean, do you have, do you have something to add about this?
Yeah, I actually met with Mike, and, you know, like you, he's looking for guidance from you, okay, so you're looking for guidance from him, I, okay, I get it.
Well, our guidance to him is we prefer to preserve the historic structure.
So, so this is maybe a happy medium, okay, and I did not come in here with a preconceived notion. My concern is to bring that house into code, which is more difficult than just giving it a facelift. The ceiling heights, okay, and things of that nature, the actual timbers and structure and so on, the foundation itself, you know, not impossible, but certainly you have to do major, major reconstruction. Let me throw this out and maybe just get some feedback, and okay, if it's a whole bunch of dots, I'm gonna duck, but maybe we could take a picture of the facade, okay, in the front of the house, and develop an identical facade on the front of the house, okay, and actually build a new house with that facade. Okay, so it's not gonna be the same house, obviously, okay, but if it's the look you're looking for, then maybe we could do something of that nature, and that just, sometimes I shouldn't...
Somehow we gotta convert a single family into a duplex, so.
Right, right.
It'd be like we're knocking it down here, but being exactly as is is not the concern.
No, and I think the concern, you know, at least maybe on the plan, but one, I wanna definitely hear from historical people on this, but I think the concern is, if you're knocking it down, you're not preserving a historic, so how do we go, how do we allow a duplex to be in that building?
What's the historical significance of the house? It was built in seventeen twenty-five, one of the earliest houses in town.
I think, good evening, my name is David Bonazoli. My family owned the Keyes Farm for a hundred and ten years. The house was built in seventeen twenty-eight. It is one of the oldest, if not the oldest, home in Bolton. The home has five fireplaces, a Bihag oven, original Dorah hardware, et cetera. It remains quite unspoiled, in other words, relatively original. My family has a long history of service to this town. The Keyes family were also an important part of Bolton's heritage. They worked to create Century Mill Road, he was the first town moderator, et cetera. This house must be preserved for the past, present, and future citizens of the great town of Bolton. Thus, I respectfully ask the developers, what exactly are your plans for this home? And I would suggest to the planning board that until something is in writing, we think twice about approving, I think it's very important to preserve this home, for the reasons I outlined, and because we've owned it for a hundred and ten years, I'm very familiar with the structure. Unfortunately, it passed into, shall we say politely, the wrong side of the family the last few years, that really didn't care. And what they may have said about the condition, so be it, but I know the house quite well, and an independent inspector would certainly answer the questions about the structural stability of it, so it's probably not worth my commenting on it, but I would suggest that we have someone independent, not paid for or tied in with the developer, give the house a good once-over, and I think the board would be surprised at the findings.
I would welcome the board to take a walk through there, I would do it one at a time.
Can I ask, is it feasible to keep the exterior of the building and, I don't know, renovate the interior to be two duplexes as it's not?
No, no, it's not even, it wouldn't be large enough, okay, it wouldn't be large enough.
Yeah, we talked about, I think that we'd have to add an extension or something in the back or something.
And that's 'cause it wouldn't be large enough because of all the code requirements?
Right, if you remember, I bought the Beemis property as well, okay, and, you know, I went through the same process, okay, explaining that it was just not feasible, okay, we offered the historical commission, I'm gonna take whatever you want out of it, okay, and so on, nothing ever became of that. You know, like, I understand Mr. Bonazoli's concern, but at the same time, this, this is not a few years in disrepair, this is, to my mind, forty years of disrepair.
I respectfully disagree.
Well, I mean, I, none of us have been in the house, so I think, I think we need to have Mike, we need to see if I have him Mike get in there and really take a look at it and...
The structural...
The structural, I sort of...
The structural integrity of the building is what's...
Yeah, that's what's important here.
That's the biggest point of the whole thing, if you have a pad of people, whether it's a duplex, a two-family, or whatever it is going to be, you're gonna have people living in there, and if it doesn't meet the structural, I mean, the code has changed incredible in the past couple of years now, and whether it's an additional onto it, or whatever it is, I'm a builder, you know, I know about buildings myself, and I understand both sides. So, if it's something that can be comparable to, you know, a decision being made, then I, you know, that's important, 'cause I understand that, you know, my hundred and ten years?
Yes, but it's really not about myself or my feelings, I'm held accountable in preserving historic structures.
We'll have to think about this more, I think.
And again, respectfully, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, Mary Chuma, okay, the other developer sold us this, this is very frustrating, because it has now changed hands, but we were sold with this preserving the building, and first of all, this is not the Beemis house, so we're not even going there. It can be done, you just don't wanna spend the money. I mean, it is, obviously, is cheaper to, much cheaper to raise a structure and build new, there's no question, but it's certain...
Can I read, can I read what the clause in the decision is, just so people can hear it, so?
Yeah, 'cause I think, you're pointing out, discussion, when we talked about feasibility, was whether or not they're gonna keep the structure renovated at all, or be reconstructed, otherwise it was gonna be, the house was gonna be demolished and it was gonna be fee and lieu.
So this is, this is the definitive subdivision approval, and in the conditions, condition nine, it says, "The applicant shall contribute to Bolton's affordable housing pursuant to section two fifty dash twenty-seven of the Bolton zoning bylaws. The applicant shall construct two affordable housing units duplexed out within the existing historical dwelling located at two fifty-eight Hudson Road." Then the other point is, "If the renovation of the historical dwelling into two affordable housing units proves to be economically infeasible, the applicant may request from the board to pay a fee and lieu of the units in accordance with the section two fifty dash twenty-seven. The applicant shall provide an accurate cost breakdown showing the fee and lieu is less than the cost to construct the units." So, it's in the decision that, you know, he's gonna keep the structure, but then he has to, you know, request, he can't just like tear the thing down, he has, there's a separate, you know, approval and request that needs to be made.
And actually, yeah, so actually what it is, is we said, 'cause exactly, just with the previous developer, you know, and they were careful to say, you know, they hadn't got in and performed that analysis, but the idea was to renovate the duplex there, if that proved infeasible, that they were gonna pay the fee and lieu, which means that the house would be renovated and it would just be a new house line. So that's why the fear was with the new ownership, would be that they just did the fee and lieu, and that's kinda what come in and say that...
So the fee and lieu is...
I guess you need to provide us the cost breakdowns and...
But we're not asking to do that, that's what I'm saying, so that was kind of the new target, and Erica is that the new ownership is committed to doing the duplex, actually getting the four units and...
So, I mean, I think back to your original question, can you just take a picture and just raise what's there and create a same facade? The answer would be no.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, similar to when a restaurant wants to get renovated, they keep one wall standing so they don't lose it with your license.
Well, so, I mean, maybe we'd have to get...
You can think of, right, you know, I mean...
No, that's exactly...
But, you know, so, you know... I think, maybe Monta could add something to this, but, you know, we have to determine, you know, what it is for it to be the same building, whether it's the chimneys, or the outside, or, you know, what could be saved, you know, what level could be saved.
Well, part of that needs to be done by the building inspectors, so we know what is appropriate to...
But I guess we need to determine what the line of preserving the initial structure, preserving what's there versus just it no longer being the same thing.
But can't we, I mean, I would say you'd wanna do the inspection first, and then based off of that, see what could be preserved and what, you know...
I guess what I was getting at is, in the decision, and what we're signing, is saying that the initial, the original structure's being kept, you know, the decision is saying it's being kept and we're putting a duplex in it, and for that to change, they have to show the cost breakdown, you know, and so we have to agree that the cost breakdown shows that it's gonna be a lot more...
It's not feasible.
It's not feasible because the fee and lieu, whether it's one eighty or two hundred, whatever, you know, it ends up being...
Do we know what's the square footage of that structure?
I have no idea, I, 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 would you know that?
It's very large, but I don't have the number off the top of my head, for some reason it's disappeared from Zillow, et cetera, et cetera, I'm trying to look it up, it says no list.
It says we should have that information.
But it's a large, it's a large house.
I drive past all the time, I understand, yeah, I was just wondering.
A large house. A large house.
I welcome the board to come out and do a...
Yeah, we can do that. We can set that up.
Sure.
Also, yeah, seven makers available, and...
Yeah, I'd like to go in.
You can get, you know...
Yeah, I think that's just a common feeling, Michael just coming up with that.
That would be...
Because that's kind of the numbers that were discussed, exactly, you previously said, you know, one eighty, two hundred, times two units. Even if it was slightly more, you know, that's, that was kind of what was discussed previously, and now we'll go run those numbers.
How are we approving this plan without the answers to these questions?
Well, the plan is saying that it's kept, and then there's a provision in here, you know...
The plan is saying the disposition of the house is a complete unknown. That's, I'll translate that...
No, the plan and the order of conditions that the board has approved says the house is kept, and it will become a duplex.
Unless it's not feasible.
Unless it's not feasible, but they, the developer, whether it's the previous owners, the current owner, you know, ten owners now, whatever, they have to show, they have to prove to the board that it's not feasible. And the first part, you know, so, but that's, you know, but, I mean, we're not gonna be changing that, that order of conditions.
I guess I, I, I admit to my lack of expertise in this area, but my question is, why wasn't, why weren't these, why weren't these questions, why weren't these estimates done? And let me give you a little background. Several months ago, the commission was in communications with previous owners. And we suggested to them that it might be useful to allow the commission to go through the property and inspect it to get a feeling for its condition and its ability to be restored and all that. And the developer's response was, sure, but, and the but was, a set of very unreasonable conditions that the commission found unacceptable to go forward with, so we never did.
Or the conditions.
Called harmless agreement.
Basically, accepting liabilities for developers' costs over which we had no control.
I...
Believe me, I read this carefully. It's a very odd agreement. It's an agreement that, you know, if you thought about it essentially, it would be simply that, you know, we couldn't sue the developer if we fell through a hole in the floor. That's what I would expect an agreement that that to look like. But this agreement was different from that. This agreement was, and we would pay, we would be responsible for costs of the developer to do various things, enforce the provisions of the agreement, and a bunch of stuff that really was unreasonable. Certainly was unreasonable for a private citizen like, like those of us on the commission to accept. So the commission frankly is a bit suspicious about the way the developer, the previous developer, handled the situation. And I'm distressed a bit that, you know, that basically, we were not given access to information. You know, the condition that you have in there is contingent on a lot of information, a lot of variables, that frankly, depending on who prepares them, you're gonna get very different answers. Okay? And as we stated earlier, historic preservation is typically not cheap, because you have to deal with issues of code and, you know, what it was before. But that's understood to be fact, and it's very easy to construct an argument. I've seen it, I've seen it done many, many times, where the rent, the cost, the cost of renovate are very, are very much higher. But the, but the effect of that, in this particular case, is that the town of Bolton loses one of its most important assets. And that's not to be taken lightly. A photovoltaic housing is important, no question about it. But this is an irreplaceable artifact of the town of Bolton. Okay? And, and, and we, as the historical commission, would have to approve its demolition. And without having gone through the hearing process, we would be very reluctant to approve that. It's very...
Maybe we'll just put a six-month delay on it.
Right.
I mean, we're not looking, we're not looking at demolition, but, and, and as you said, I mean, the numbers can be skewed, you know, I mean, you know, the previous developers could have gone in and said, "Yeah, look, based on our numbers, it's gonna be uneconomical, so we're gonna have, we're gonna have to exercise that clause and demo the building." So getting an estimate before doesn't, you know, you know, but that's where, I mean, Mike Savio is, I mean, he's town building inspector. He also does build, he is also a builder, I believe. But as, you know, but as an employee of the town, he's gonna give the town, you know, what he considers the right numbers. You know, accurate numbers there, which is why we want him to go in and take a look at it. I've renovated old houses, and I've been living in them, and, yeah, it's always an interesting exercise. But, you know, we need to figure out what's there. But, but whether it's salvageable or not, I mean, you know, I mean, it's in the order of conditions. I'm a little bit, I guess I'd say I'm a little bit disappointed with you guys for not raising the issue that you were having with the previous developer with us at the time, because we would have forced the issue. Yeah, we want to make sure to get in there.
We're gonna have a walkthrough. Yeah, I mean, typically, when we do walkthroughs, it's just us, but I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't mind if, you know, a couple people from the historical society were touching...
Attention.
We're at the town board, we typically get in work, but we really are a town, to be honest.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I just don't want a public...
No, no, it's second-hand, so that's for the public.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying.
And, and again, okay, you know, we just like some acknowledgement that, you know, you got a homeless house, oh, Jesse, for injury, okay?
When we work, we work as employees in the town, we're covered by the town's general liability insurance. That's not an issue. We do this with houses all over town.
We're private, we're private developers, okay? And, you know, we just don't want to have a problem because we're trying to deliver.
Yeah, I mean, so the process is, you know, the town doesn't own the house, you guys own the house. If they want to demolish the house, you guys have to, you know, put in an application for it. They could put a six-month hold if they deem it, you know, historically significant, which of course it is. But what we're working as the planning board is to save, you know, we put this clause in here to save the, to save the house and put, you know, allow a duplex in there, you know?
If that was our intention, we would have already put in, okay, a demolition permit, okay? Anticipating a six-month delay, okay? That's, that's, that's not our intent. Our intent is to try to work with this board and the commission, okay? To do something that's economically feasible, okay, to try to...
Yeah.
Enough sadly, just...
Yeah, right. I think the clause that's in here is, I think it's good, it's in place, it says we're gonna save it, and we're gonna have that...
We agree with it. We ask that you sign it.
Martha, you had it here before.
Yeah, Martha Reddington, chairman of the board of, pardon me, chairman of the historical commission. First of all, the plans don't mention anything but dwelling, and they don't say anything about historic buildings. There are at least two historic buildings that are over seventy-five years old on that property. The cinder block garage is almost a hundred years old. It's been left out of the plans. And I, myself, and other members of the commission, did attend, not all, but certainly many of the hearings that Conservation and Planning Board held. And I don't think there was any doubt in your minds after we were there and said a little piece that this is a very historic place.
And we do say, we do say, within the existing historical dwelling, and we didn't talk about the garage, but...
Yeah, but I thought in the, on the actual plans here, the garage is not shown, correct?
Right. It's gone. It's not on, it's not on the site plan.
Yeah, exactly.
It's where Moderator Road goes, and you see the existing road. If you look at the site plans, the house is there, the existing structure is the house. But if you look at Moderator Road and the existing driveway, there is no structure.
Well, I mean, I don't, I'm not, we definitely didn't talk about the road.
I don't remember ever hearing anything...
It never came around, any, in any of the hearings that you attended.
No, because we were concentrating on the house.
But it hasn't just popped up, as I say, it looks like it's more modern, but it really is historic as far as our demolition, demolition delay bylaw goes. So I would recommend that you hold off on signing this to go to the registry of deeds until these things have happened. And Mike Savio has done a lot of historic preservation himself. So I think he's quite qualified.
We're certainly not going to preserve the garage. That's, that was the given.
It's the first area.
Yeah, it's, 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 oh, the roof is off. I mean, it's, it's...
No, it's, it's...
It's just walls up there.
Yeah, just to clarify. Roof is off on the garage.
Roof is off on the hay bough.
It is an existing building.
There's two existing structures besides the house.
So it's three structures.
On the site, is it, is this a site prep or the demolition or...
It's a lot like cheese.
Oh, okay. And it says to be removed?
May I show you this, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Clarify.
So then here, they're just listing it to be removed.
Here is the garage. Here is one of the hay boughs. The foundation is intact for this, and the garage is fine, there's no leaks, there's no nothing here. So these are the structures that we're talking about. The house is right where my pen is. This is the driveway. Okay?
I mean, you know, right where they have the road, so...
I think, well, it wasn't really discussed, I know, but it was noted for them to be removed on the plans.
Has it been approved though?
Those were approved, yes.
Well, historical commission should have been made aware of that, even though they haven't filed a demolition permit. I mean, if you've known all along that this was going to be the way it was...
I don't think it was really brought up with our attention.
It was never even brought up that it was...
Historic, look historic, yeah.
Yeah, it was never even brought up as it became an issue. We, all we talked about was the house.
I, I didn't know that it was historic.
I don't know the cinder block buildings are historic.
Yeah, what's the definition of historic there?
Can I ask a question about process? I just heard at the start of this meeting, a discussion about, a discussion of Conservation Commission compromises were reached and agreements to execute. Why does that process not work with the historical commission? Why wasn't the, this is, it hasn't historical money. It shouldn't be just that we have to show up at the hearing and comment like a gentleman or the general public. We're a voting board, we control the disposition of the artifacts on the property by the demolition delay bylaw. If the presumption is that a, that a structure is going to be demolished, isn't it reasonable that the historical commission would weigh in one way or another?
Absolutely. I think the, what we're seeing here is, there was never the, at least the previous intention to demolish the house, which was talked about as historic. I think it wasn't our understanding that the garages were historic. So I think there was just a disconnect there.
And I think, my general comment is, I think in future, the more that you can...
We can coordinate, yeah.
Treat us, treat the historical commission as you would the Conservation Commission. Get us involved in the process, not just as a bystander, but as a participant.
I think, I think you guys need to get in front of the board of selectmen, you know?
Well, I think, I think, but even that, I'm...
You can happily come in front of, into our hearings, but, I mean, they go before the ConCon because you guys need approvals from them, right?
Right.
Otherwise, you wouldn't go before them. So if it's... Yeah, like, yeah, I mean, they go there because they need their approvals for them. There's nothing in our bylaws besides the six-month demolition delay that say you need approvals from historic commission, so...
But how can you approve a plan that presumes the demolition of a structure where it hasn't been approved? I guess I don't understand that place. I'm saying that, again, if you're, if you're looking at a plan, it's gonna be approved by the planning board. And the plan includes a historic structure on it. It's not a, it's not, it's not really the planning board's ability to say, "You can demolish that."
Well, I think, just to get to your point, though, we weren't talking about the house. The house was not supposed, at least under our permit, it was not, and it was not our understanding. I don't want to speak for anyone else. It was not my understanding that the garage, so that was just an oversight.
Like, literally, not written, was mentioned.
But, but to get to your other point, I am wholeheartedly open to some communication back and forth when there's historic issues. And I would actually look to you for some guidance for certain things, so I... And with the other project and the ConCon, it was, we actually asked them to work with the ConCon, with regard to the trails and some stuff, so it was just something that was also within the ConCon's purview, so...
Yeah, trails.
But this is a historic property. So, for your information, in Erica's office are the surveys on all the historic houses in Bolton, including the Keys. And your, your three-car garage is also listed in this historical, in the architectural report.
That's, that's not interesting.
It's just a lack of communication between...
I think you're right. It's only been out for twenty years.
Well, that predates everybody on the boards.
But Erica has a copy, there's one at the library, there's one at the town clerk's office, and we have several copies of our own. And this is what these are based on, so...
I mean, I believe it was in the historical commission on this project, right?
We were...
Because I know, I know that's kind of what we come up with, Monica, you're right.
We got this, or something that looked like this, I believe.
I think, at all of the hearings, it was never brought up by anyone, any audience, or that the two garages were historic.
We talked a ton about the house, saving the house.
And I asked where the road was going to go, and I was told it was going to be in the original driveway. And the garage is, what, forty-five, fifty feet from the house?
I mean, this is the original entrance, isn't it? Or is it a little...
Yeah, so they said the curb cut, the road was going to be right about where the current driveway is.
Which is the case.
Yeah.
There is an additional driveway just north of the house.
Yeah, I mean, it's a wide road.
There's, there's an additional driveway just a few feet north of the...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, this gentleman's had his hand up for quite some time now.
Just a quick question, Bill Nichols. Is there anything being done to protect the house currently from the elements, and does it don't take long for something to go bad?
I don't know what's going on there.
We haven't done anything, the same way nobody else has for decades.
Well, then it's gonna be, I mean, it, it wouldn't take long for it to go from something that possibly could be rehabbed to not.
That's why we want the building... I, I came up and talked to Mike maybe six weeks ago, and, you know, okay, the, the idea was that he wanted some, some guidance from, from the board. You know, they want some guidance from him, so...
Well, we want, we want his input, and we'll, we'll give him the guidance to work with us on the site.
Well, I mean, so, we've had the, we've had the hearings where, in the decision, you know, we're attempting to save it by making it a duplex. If, if that, you know, doesn't work out, you know, based on a cost breakdown, we're gonna have a walkthrough. I don't really know what else we can do here besides, you know, unfortunately, your family sold the property, you know, so it's out of your hands. The historical commission can put a six-month, you know, delay, you know, if you do decide to demo it, so... I mean, I think everything's in order, personally.
I'd like to, I'd like to propose something. In my past life as an engineering advisor, I've always found that deadlines galvanize the mind. What I would propose is, that the condition you described be executed, go forward with the assignment. That, that people get into high gear, go do the estimates, go figure out the answer, so everybody knows what's going on. As opposed to leaving it where it can be, you have no idea what the ultimate outcome is going to be.
So what was signed today is, I mean, so this approval is signed, done, right? You know, it's signed, dated, signed, dated, where that condition is, I mean...
So what...
There's no taking of that.
So why is this meeting being held? Because it said the meeting's being held?
No, the meeting's being held to sign the plans that need to be filed.
Right, yeah.
Not the approval. I think Mr. Bonazzoli requested to talk about the house, which we were fine with. And actually, I think you said you wanted to talk about it as well. So we were fine discussing it. But that, you know, condition is approved.
So how about the three-car garage? That's not on the site plan, that requires the commission's approval for a demolition delay because it is a historic...
Is that what you showed here, and it's on here as well?
Yeah.
So it's on the plans? It's on the plans as being destroyed?
Right.
Well, that's not on the plans.
But you need to go through the process of a demolition delay.
Right, so, which, which may make his original request about Saturday work moot if he needs to go to the historical commission and have a six-month delay there for it.
Well, no, if that's the case, okay, and they're clearly just trying to stonewall, okay? And I'll apply for a demolition permit for the house too.
There we go.
And, and that is...
Right, but that, but that would void the order of conditions unless you, you know, there's a lot of other things you need to, so...
I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, and it seems very unfair, and I guess that's the word, or disingenuous, that all of a sudden, okay, a cement block garage gets, gets brought up today.
So, I mean, I think everything in the planning board's perspective is in order. I don't know if, well, maybe the historical commission can say is, who did you file that with, with Pam? Well, maybe the historical commission can say is, "You file that with Pam?" Like a delay? Like who accepts the six-month...
The building department. Mike Savage-O or Jenny Jacobson.
Yeah, so they determine if, you know, they can accept it.
Yeah, they have to go through the process. I think another thing that kind of hurts is nobody from the planning board reached out to the historical commission about any of these...
Martha, you were here every single day. You never mentioned anything about a garage. You were here.
Well, I'm sorry. It was kind of obvious it was there. I think I did mention it when I first asked about the road.
It goes back to, and again, I'm not name-calling, it's just disingenuous.
I think that the planning board should be a little more responsible, as they say, about...
In the future, Martha, if there's a historic structure on the property, we will make sure we reach out to you.
Yeah, well, I gave you the survey and it lists all the, you know, appropriate things. Obviously, the house is a little more important than the garage.
And in fairness, on all of your comments, that's what you focused on as well.
Yes, that's true.
So you never brought up the...
They never said they were going to, you know, they said, "Yeah, the house, we're going to try and get it to a family."
Right. All the discussion was about the house, but nothing else was mentioned of anything else.
Well, it's not our responsibility to get mentioned.
I'm not sure whose responsibility it is then, so...
I mean, we literally don't even have to vote anything tonight.
Right.
Everything's voted for and approved. We're just signing these plans.
Could I just make one last comment? I do take a bit of offense to the assumption that my family let the house go for many years and didn't maintain it. That simply isn't so. As an example, there was a soft spot developing in the roof. And we repaired that just within the last two years. And it's on the backside, not the street side of the roof. And if you look, it's right about in the center. So if you step back from the house and look, you'll notice that the roofing shingles are slightly different color because we couldn't match exactly what was there. But we made sure that that house was tight to the elements.
Well, if it's tight, then we go and then it should be saved.
That I'm sure of.
Yeah. I mean, we're going to do an...
If we could fix this, we would like to fix this. Okay? I'm not... I don't want to incur more expense than I have to incur. Okay? So, you know, respectfully, okay, I guess I would ask the board, please sign my plan.
Yeah, I think, I personally think we're in order.
Can I just add one last point?
Okay, last one.
Last point. Did the commission, in its deliberations, consider the fact that there was a farm dump on this site where there were machinery stored, there's a gas pump on the site, and other things like that?
I believe it might have come up in conservation at one point.
Yeah, they wanted us to clean a lot of that up, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if you want to say anything about that.
Yeah, that was brought up at the conservation hearings. And we actually, during the sidewalk one, we took a look at, I don't know if it's specifically those items that you mentioned, but part of our order of conditions is to clean those items up because of the proximity of that area to the wetland resource areas.
Okay. Did you specifically identify a gas pump and the farm dump? Or was this just a general position?
No, I'd say I'm not sure what specifically the items were. I mean, there's a lot of concrete mant, construction debris, you know, various TVs. I mean, there was all kinds of stuff. Certainly, if there's anything of value, I don't think you're against donating to whoever wants it.
We had a gasoline pump on the premises for many years. I have a picture of it here.
Just enter here and just...
I don't know if any of you are aware of that, but there's the pump.
And so, the horse has already out of the barn. We've already signed the approval. It is what it is, so we're going to sign these documents. And if you guys need to do whatever you're going to do, I mean, that's up to you, commission.
But we'll also make a site visit.
Yeah, we're going to make a site visit.
To go with Mike.
The goal is to save it, yeah.
I think that's important to note. I think, you know, that was the original intent.
Well, I'd like to let... Would you at least record for the record that the historical commission objects to the signing of this without a full determination of the disposition of the prime house?
If the approval's already signed.
We're just making a statement. Put it in the minutes. If you want to ignore it, go for it.
The plans are not signed quite yet.
They've been approved.
It was already voted on, I think. So bottom line, the endorsement here tonight, it was already approved previously. So that's not up for question or up for debate. But you can easily state that. But I think what we're trying to do now is move forward and try to see if there's a way to keep it. We're going to do a site visit and see if we can keep it how it was intended and within the conditions here, is how we want to go forward. But I think, I mean, there's no voting or approval process of the plans because it was already voted on previously.
I think the wording is an accurate cost breakdown showing, you know, showing it. So, you know, we'll use Mike to make sure that it's accurate, you know? We're not just going to take the numbers you give us and not... Hopefully, it doesn't even come to that.
Yeah. I mean, hopefully, we can do the site visit. We can look at the house, see that there's potential for duplex. I mean, best-case scenario, that we get exactly what we asked for originally here. And if it can't be that, then we'll go those next steps.
I think, you know, in the future, maybe we should have an agenda item where we talk about historical commission's role in these properties. I'm not sure if it's here or if it's at the board of selectmen meetings, but...
Yeah, I mean, I guess...
I think we entertained all of your, you know, concerns.
I mean, I think about, I mean, similar to what we do with commercial buildings with the D R B, maybe just that our process has to just change slightly so if there's historic structures that, you know, that we need to sign off for historic...
Better communication so that we understand that there were more structures on there that was not... That was missed.
Well, that's what the town Bolton survey is for. And I would like to point out that Mr. Page...
Pace.
Pace, rather, had three demolitions at 401 Burling Road, two of which he did not pay to demolish the Fryville Post Office and another farm building probably for poultry. So he built some nice new houses there.
Nor did I demolish.
But I don't know if the people want to continue to look at those that were already, they've expired now, so they'd have to go through another demo permit process. But we want to make sure that...
Sign it.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's nothing for us to vote on, so...
No, we'll try to improve the communication.
Yeah, I agree.
So it's better...
Yeah, we've been here for quite a few years, too.
And, well, you know, would you mind if we open up the walkthrough to the commission? And every town board...
I just want everybody to sign off.
It won't be the public, but it'll be the planning board and the commission.
Yeah, I just want to be there.
Yeah.
I'll wait outside.
Yeah.
No, I... Every developer comes in here and says they want to work it.
Yeah.
We want to work it. Okay? You know, but...
Did you have to order?
Probably.
Yeah.
I'll take the bottom one out over here.
Does this have a field process after the signing?
The field process has already passed.
Yeah, we took them in, it was voted. And I don't know if that was... So you said it's already passed?
Yeah, I thought you signed it by that.
Gotcha. Oh, yeah, because you can't record it until I...
Right.
Dating it by... Date approved. Or date endorsed.
That's, yeah. We're endorsing it tonight. We're endorsing it.
Okay, so that's the date of the approval, which is February what? It's on the ballot.
February 9th, February... April, well, that's April 1st.
Town clerk was on March 6th.
Is that the date we should put?
Vote was on... Yeah, because we have a date in place below it. So endorse it.
Yes, endorse.
That's today, right?
That's today. Four... Seven, eight.
Date approved. I think the date approved is probably just 2/28.
It should be on there, right? I think it goes to the town clerk after the...
So March 6th? So March 6th?
That's on...
All right, so 3/6/2018. Six, eighteen. Which? You got it.
Is it only the people...
And then today.
Yes.
So I got that right? 3/6/18, 7/18, 18?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Hold on, hold on. Sorry. Let's talk a little bit.
Why would he go there?
Because he's not, I mean... Is it happy who was on?
I don't know.
Why would he do that? Yeah, I don't know.
Did you miss?
Who was it? February? February 28th?
February 28th?
It's my next... We'll have one extra segment. Better one extra than one less.
I don't understand. It's weird, yeah.
Here. Over there.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to... No. I want just the moment.
No, it's not for the details. Every board that's been on, it's always a place where other boards have communicated or other planning boards approved these lot lines. And now we need to issue variances because they can't work otherwise. You know, every board is always...
What it boils down to is the safety, again, structural integrity of the building is anything.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's... The future residences of...
At risk.
You can't do that. Can you build your road with that structure there?
Which what structure?
The garage.
No, I don't believe we can.
No.
Okay. With the proper rating and the...
But I guess I would argue that...
Yeah, it's eventually going to be a public road.
It's insignificant. Okay? You know, okay, it's a garage, it's an...
No, no, no. I guess I mean, like, while you're waiting for the six months, can you do construction? Can you do the majority of your stuff before that gets...
I guess I'm going to get a legal opinion, whether that's a historic building. Okay, just because, okay, something was built, you know, on a Concom, it will be a bunker, okay, you know, doesn't mean it's historic.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know the definition.
And the truth of the matter is, okay, I mean, I've been doing development work for four years. And I understand the historical commission means well. The only thing they're going to do is anytime anybody has anything on their property, is apply for a demo permit. Okay? Immediate. Okay? They're really shooting themselves in the foot and, you know, and I understand and I appreciate it. I know the schtick, okay, with Martha, okay? She's here every meeting. She knows everything, okay? You know, she's in that city.
Do we not know what that building's been built before?
I have no idea. I did walk through the door. Okay? I couldn't get out of it fast enough. Okay, so...
I'm interested to see. I'm interested to see.
Well, you can go through the walkthrough since...
One of the things I...
Your construction...
Was a knee-jerk reaction. What if we created, okay? Because nobody's going to see the inside of the building no matter what, okay? So if you recreated it, okay, and, you know, and I'm talking about Clapper, not my own, do it right.
No, I know. It just, it gets, the way it was written off is to preserve it, to allow the duplex. Like if you're going to raise it, you're just going to do one. You wouldn't be able to do a duplex the way our...
Right.
Sorry, yeah.
No, I understand. Okay, but, you know, we're not asking for a week for that renovation. We're going to build a duplex there, whether I have to, you know, okay, I mean, that's our intention.
Well, that's great. It's good to actually get the units and not it being the...
Yeah, you know. And, but, you know, I mean, what's it going to look like when it's all done? I think it's going... When they... Okay, people, I'd be a giant, okay, back in 1700s, okay? You know? Okay, I mean, the...
I have a house in my, that's been in my family since 1731. It's an extra house. My mother lives in it. My husband, when he walks through the door, he's like, "Knock." You know, and all the floors go like this and...
So, no matter that, how do you insulate that building?
Okay, no, you can't.
To today's code?
You can't.
Okay? It's virtually, the only way you could do that is build another wall inside of the front wall, leave the front wall up or side wall. Yeah. You know, I mean, it's...
Today's codes are...
They're all...
They are, they are.
Are the codes the same though for renovation?
But for renovation, I think they're different. It's maximum feasible. So if you...
What if you do spray foam?
If you have any, you could spray foam and, you know, that would be what's, that's feasible there.
Right. But, I mean, that's just one thing.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Spare coats and head heights and, you know, okay, I mean...
Well, so, I mean, we'll throw in Mike. You're in the field as well.
Yeah, I can, I'll easily do my thing about it.
The...
I know a thing or two about construction.
I welcome you coming in. The building was not in disrepair for a weekend. It was a long time ago. And I'd like to thank the board, too.
I mean, that entire discussion...
It probably should...
We didn't even really do it.
At the beginning, that it was...
Yeah.
That it was not approved tonight.
Yeah.
Sometimes you try and be a good neighbor, it's out of control, isn't it?
All right. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
That's it. Goodnight.
Thank you. I would suggest, I'm going on vacation for six days, from the 4th, from August to the 9th. I mean, I'd better do this, settle, okay? Whatever you guys want.
Yeah, so typically, Erica's...
She'll do a little poll.
She's back full-time now, right?
She is. She's just up at another, we moved our meeting, so she's at another meeting tonight. She's upstairs.
Oh, she's...
Oh, sorry. Hold. Upstairs.
Thank you again.
Okay, goodnight. All right. Any motion to adjourn?
No, she can adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right.